I'd like to call to order the January 13th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallo.
Here.
Ms. DeSico.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Meredith, absent. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Appone.
Here.
Mr. Flynn.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Excellent. First, I have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, approval of the minutes from the November 25th?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
I appreciate the speed in which these motions are coming. Somebody else has got a football game to get to this evening. All right, this evening, we've got three site plans, two of which are public hearings, and then two items that have been before this board before that we need to take some action on. First is site plan number 19-42, David Kapusansky, Aldi renovations. I guess our easel isn't good enough.
I didn't want to offend anybody by stealing their easel.
I'll tell you what, once you use that one, because you'll piss off the camera, guys. Boy, we don't want that to happen. That's marginally better than the woman at the end. You don't want to make her mad, do you?
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris Gincovich. I'm with Design Engineers. I'm the Civil Engineer for Aldi, and we are proposing a remodel and expansion of the existing store located on Van Dyke. This site currently contains a building just over 21,000 square feet of floor area. Aldi occupies just under 16,000 square feet of that building, and the remaining floor area is currently just vacant lease space, currently used for storage. And so what we're proposing to do is to expand Aldi into that lease space and increase their sales floor area. We'll be going from about 9,700 square feet to just over 12,000, about 12,250, right in that range. And so that will also come with a complete remodel of the store interior and some improvements to the exterior facade. And for the exterior, we're going to bring the store up to the current standard of Aldi, make it look like the stores that you're used to seeing lately. And so to do that, we're going to remove the two gable canopies that are up over the two store entrances. You've got the lease, one over the lease base, one over Aldi. Those will be removed. We're going to take Aldi EPIS off the front of the facade and remove the existing brick, and then we're going to re-brick that store. So you're going to have a full masonry facade, top to bottom, all the way through. That will use the signature Aldi blend through the main walls, and then we'll use an accent color on each of the pilasters. The entrance itself will be all glass doors, and then we'll also have glass along the cart enclosure, both inside and outside of the cart enclosure, as there is today, to allow that natural light into the store. Above the main entrance doors, we're going to construct what we call the tower, and that's going to be a raised parapet that's finished in a composite aluminum panel flanked by brick pilasters, and then that houses a 75-square-foot Aldi logo sign. Just to the left of that, over the cart enclosure, there will be a secondary raised parapet, just to give some transition from the tower down to the main roof line. That's finished in a cedar nichihua siding, and then again, that's flanked by the brick pilasters. We'll also be installing some LED light fixtures along each of the pilasters. That's going to not only illuminate the sidewalk and the pavement down below, but that'll wash over the brick, give us a nice lightscape feature at night. And that would really take up all the building improvements. As far as the site, we're looking to resurface and restripe the parking lot. We'll actually add a couple of parking spaces, go from 174 to 176, and we're going to replace all the site lighting with LED fixtures, and then also reface the existing pylon sign. Does that be happy to answer any questions?
Great. To the planner, any comments?
I don't have any comments, Chairman. The only thing that I was, I thought about when you were talking about remodeling the interior, are you going to be adding any more refrigeration units or anything up above?
Probably everything will be replaced. From that standpoint, typically on these stores, we are replacing everything.
Okay. So just so you know, any rooftop equipment must be screened.
Okay.
I know it wasn't part of the comments, but I didn't know you were doing the interior as well.
Okay, to the board, any questions for the petitioner? Looks great to me.
Thank you.
It's been a nice addition. I remember when you first came in here, probably one of the first stores in Michigan, I think.
It's pretty close. I think that one was 85.
No, no, no. It was, I'm not that old.
It's been there a while.
No, not that quite one.
It was before my era.
It was a Frank's.
It was before my era.
I was trying to be complimentary, and now you took a shot. No, I'm kidding. Hearing no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan 19-42 for David Kapusansky for Aldi Inc., parcel number 23-07-27-351-045.
Support.
Moved by DeSico, support by Dallo. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner DeSico.
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Commissioner Appone.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Will you please, sir? Excuse me. Can you sign in, please?
Okay, next item is a site plan number 19-43, special land use number eight. This is Steve Brewer for Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union. This is a public hearing unless the secretary read the notice as published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant Steve Brewer, Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, 40400, Garfield Road, Clinton Township, Michigan, 48038. Proposed use credit union with drive-through. Location vacant parcel, southwest corner of West Pearson and Van Dyke, site plan number 19-43 SLU-8. Sidewell number 23-07-04-276-013, and 23-07-04-276-014. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January 13, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use in the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act of 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on December 25, 2019. There were 48 property owners, and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on December 19, 2019.
Thank you. Ms. Denowitz, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Great, thank you. Can you also explain the uses of the presence in zoning and if this special land use request is appropriate?
Thank you. This parcel is zoned C1, which is a commercial zoning. What's sought here is a bank with a drive-through, and banks and financial institutions are in fact a permitted use in the C1 district within certain parameters, subject to the special land use standards of the Shelby Township ordinance generally set forth at section 6.5.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this?
No, we did not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, the format for the public hearing, this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner will come up, state what the requesting's, their reasons for it. We'll then turn it to the board to ask any questions of the petitioner. At that time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone can come up and offer their opinion or ask any questions. We'll close that, bring the petitioner back up to address those questions. It's not a debate. You get one shot at it, and we'll make a decision on what our recommendation to the board, who ultimately will make the decision. At this time, the petitioner here. So what, you didn't bring your own easel?
I did not. Good evening. My name's John Vitale. I'm with the firm Stuckey and Vitale Architects, and I'm representing the Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union this evening. So we're presenting a brand-new branch for Michigan Schools and Government. They're looking forward to expanding in the community. The building is approximately about 3,800 square feet. It'd be masonry, some EPIS, and some faux stone product around the exterior of the building. They've got a small rendering that shows three-dimensional depiction of what that building looks like. So Michigan Schools and Government does a fine job. They're a very well-known, growing credit union, and they look forward to being in the Shelby Township community, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Actually, expanding in the Shelby community.
Pardon?
Expanding in the Shelby.
I'm sorry. You're right.
And that's what they look to do? This is a second location?
That's correct.
I mean, they just put a lot of money into remodeling the facility on 23 Mile Road.
So they're hoping, they've done very well here. They have enjoyed the community, and they're feeling that this location will help take some of the load off that existing location and increase as it grows in this spot.
Okay, great. To the board, any questions? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sit down. Yeah, can you sign in, please? You don't want to be scolded. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation. The Township Board will make the final decision on this special land use request. At this time, anyone is welcome to come up and ask a question or offer their opinion. Go on once, go on twice, bring it back to the board. Planner for her comments.
Okay, Mr. Moffett, the items that you are seeing in your special land use comments, those have all been addressed. We've done a preliminary review on this, and also the engineer's comments have all been addressed. So if you guys can hand me your plans when you're all done, I don't have a problem with that. They are providing a good screening amount on the west side of the property with a detention pond and extensive landscaping. The drive-through won't be a burden to the residents in the area as it is along Van Dyke Road, and kudos to the architect. They've also, the, all sides of the elevations are going to look all comparable, so you're not going to be able to tell what's the rear or the side or anything else.
Good, thank you. I see that sort of section of the township has become sort of a credit union row. I think there are a handful of them. Okay, with that, if there's no questions, so the planner, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a question, real quick question of the planner. On the northwest and southwest elevations, Julie, they show the EPIS going all the way to the ground. Typically, don't we allow them, don't we prefer that they not take it all the way to the ground?
Right, we suggest that there is some sort of brick along the ground, correct?
That's the only two elevations I saw. Just a small portion, but we typically like to have the brick at the bottom.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to modify that to prevent the, we don't like the EPIS going to the ground either, so I totally agree with that. We'll correct that. We'll provide some stone or masonry at the bottom of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our recommendation this evening must be based on the following: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. At this point, we can recommend approval, disapprove, or table it to evaluate the information further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve special land use application number 9-48 SLU-8 for Steve Brewer for Michigan Schools and Government Credit Union, proposing a credit union building with a drive-through service for the following reasons. The proposed use of this site for a credit union with drive-through service lanes is consistent with the development pattern along Van Dyke. The development of this site will not interfere or discourage the development of abutting property. The submission of a revised site plan is required incorporating applicable review comments from Township Departments, the Planning Commission, and engineer.
Your support?
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Moore. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck. Next item is rezoning petition number 07-19, Mike Chirco, Michael Chirco, MJC Land Investments. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask the secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant Michael A. Chirco, MJC Land Investments LLC, 46600 Romeo Plank Road, Suite 5, Macomb Township, Michigan, 48044. Rezoning request from R1 One Family Residential to R1C One Family Residential. Rezoning petition number 07-19. Location vacant land northwest of 25 Mile Road and Hayes Road. Legal descriptions are as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, January 13, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text, and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on December 25, 2019. There are 29 property owners, nine utilities, and one applicant were notified by first-class mail on December 18, 2019.
Great, thank you. Ms. Denowitz, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it does.
Great. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this?
We did, in our packets. We did receive a letter from the Deagles, from Deagle Greenhouses. She's concerned about the sewer, who is paying for the sewer in that area.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The format for the public hearing, this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will come and state what the requesting's and the reason for it. We'll then bring it back to the board for any questions. Then I'll open it up to the public for comment, question, comments, and then back to the petitioner to address anything that was raised. At this time, the petitioner's ready. If you do want to comment, I need name and address, and make sure you sign in, please.
Good evening. My name is Mario Izzy. I'm with MJC Companies. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Chirco. We've owned this property, and I want to thank you for the opportunity tonight to be here. We've owned this property for about a year and a half, almost two years. It's currently zoned R1. We've looked at a few different development options. It will be developed all as residential. We've been watching the progress of the proposed development to the west. I understand there is a recommendation from this commission to the board, but it has not yet been ratified. So we took some of that into consideration with our initial request for R1C. This is a very early stage of the development pattern, obviously. We don't feel that the R1 is the highest, best use of this property. We've had a chance to read the planner's comments. We do agree with some, we disagree with others. I'd like to answer any questions you may have and go through the public hearing process tonight. We've had an opportunity to also meet with the planner today for a few minutes. He was very kind to meet with us over the counter. I think at the end of the meeting tonight, or at the end of the public hearing, we'd like to ask to be tabled for an opportunity to provide some more information. I think there are some possibilities to reach some compromises and maybe amend our proposal from the R1C to potentially an R1B, which I think is more consistent with your master plan. So with that, if any other questions, and then maybe we can open up the public hearing.
Well, what do you agree with, what do you disagree with?
I have my personal feelings about the economics of the housing market currently, and I understand that you probably don't want to take any of that into consideration. But eventually, what we're seeing in the marketplace right now, the bigger lots, with our development costs, what we're seeing, it's getting very difficult to provide affordable housing for younger families, even retirees, for something, for something, for lots, 100-foot lots, 90-foot lots, just because of the direction of the development costs. That's why we're looking to make the lots a little bit smaller. We understand that you're requiring site entrance garages. We have no problem with that. I think with a few of the layouts that we've proposed internally, excuse me, we're still less than the three units to the acre, because this property is a little unusual, and some of the utilities that are there. We have an ITC corridor, we have a transmission line, a gas transmission line that bisects the property. There's some flood plain, there's a stream to the north. It's a unique piece, and we're going to have to take a closer look at some of our site plans. I think there's an opportunity to do a PUD with this development, but we have to provide the information to you. So we're not prepared to do that tonight.
You're intent to put affordable housing?
Well, affordable is a relative term, correct?
Well, you're, it was...
My word.
Your words.
Yes, sir. Affordable is a relative term, something a little more affordable. We're seeing the trend for younger families. Anything under $400,000 is very difficult to come by, but it remains to be seen. So, but thank you.
Yeah. To the board, any comments before I open it up to the, so we'll...
Yeah, I think R1C is a non-starter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Understood.
Well, let's see what the public has to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Might be a little surprised if you get some support, but who knows? All right. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision. At this time, anyone is free to come, offer a comment, or ask a questions of what is being proposed.
Please sign in. Did I not sign in?
I told them already.
Oh, you did? Okay.
And if you don't sign in, she's going to hit me, so please sign in.
Patrick Smasco, 14989 25 Mile Road. Just one question, do you have a site plan to show exactly where that is on it?
Oh, where it is?
Where, because we're on 25, and it says the northwest corner, but I don't know exactly for the...
Here.
You can have it, yep.
And then can you just explain the difference between the R1A, B, and C in density, and how it actually affects with the number of houses that could be on that property?
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I live at 56081 Hayes Road. I wanted to thank Mr. Izzy. He had, we've been in contact with him a bit over the past couple months. He had the courtesy of meeting with us to kind of talk in grander scale as our property butts up, at least on two sides. We're kind of on a rectangle, two of those sides touch the development to be, so I thank him for that. He voiced kind of like their hopes of what they were wanting to see, listened to our concerns. And so I want to go on the record as saying I'm not opposed to housing going in that However, we bought the property roughly two years ago as an R1, with the understanding of what R1 would mean, what it would look like as neighboring houses to ours, and having more homes going in there than what we initially were anticipating then. My question goes to looking at the ordinances, kind of explanation as to, when you say that natural features and woodland areas of land is to be preserved to the maximum extent, what exactly does that mean? Is there a percentage? Where exactly would that go? And then for those of us, I know there's not many of us that touch that piece of land, but for those of us who do, I've read up on the screening requirements and the varying degrees of that. I know that we are not talking about a glue factory going up next door to our houses, but being R1 and then switching it to something different is going to have some sort of impact on those of us who have been living there, purchased the land as is. So will any sort of screening need to be taking place? Preferably natural screening on our half, we would prefer, but will anything be done? That's it. Thank you.
Okay, why don't you wait till you hit the microphone, please?
Tom McAvoy, and Thirty-five, five-hundred, wait, no. Thirty-six-oh-fifty-nine Hayes Road. Anyways, along that creek, the Preston Creek, are they going to be allowed, there's a tree line on both sides of that, are they going to be allowed to take that out so it actually is wide open there? I mean, there, there's a lot of things that are just, and nobody really said, what is the distinction? Is it just eighty-foot frontage? And what's the side lots on the rezoning?
We'll, we'll address all the questions that were raised.
Okay.
Okay. And in terms of commenting on what they're going to do to the site, this is, this has nothing to do with the site plan. All, all that they're proposing is to rezone it.
Well, it's just...
And then, and then a site plan would come in after whatever, you know, a, whatever decision is made ultimately on, on how it's owned.
Well, I, I was just wondering, because there have been times where you guys have sent things about covering that creek, and, I mean, it would change the whole thing. So, that's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. There was, the, the letter referenced connection to the sewer, what's, or having to create a special district?
No, that district's already set in place.
Okay, so it is included within the district that had been set?
Right.
Okay. So, can you explain, while I've got you, are the R1 and R1A, B, and C?
Okay, so the different sizes in the residential districts go from R1, which is a hundred-and-twenty-foot lot width with the minimum lot area of thirty thousand square feet. The R1A is a hundred-and-ten-foot lot width along with nineteen thousand eight-hundred square feet in area. R1B is ninety feet with fourteen thousand four-hundred square feet in area, and R1C is a minimum lot width of eighty feet with twelve thousand square feet in area. And respectively, the side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and front yard are differentiate as well.
Okay. And then there was a question, there is no screening between residential, no matter what the, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. And then I think there was a question of what's the difference between the densities? And R1 is typically one-point-four-five units per acre, down to, R1A is two-point-two units per acre, and R1B is three units per acre, and R1C is three-point-six-three units per acre.
Okay, thank you.
But, but to the point on the screening, if, if you, that's the reason we have those setbacks, so that you could still have trees in your backyard, so even if the new guy doesn't want a single tree in his backyard, the setback would allow you to create a buffer of your own if you wanted to, so that there's some accommodation built in. That's all I got.
Thank you. You know, back, just historically, you have the, the, the R1 designation, the R1 designation typically existed at a time where we didn't have water and sewer in the township, and that there was, there was, there were wells on septic. So you had to have lot sizes that were large enough to accommodate those. That no longer is issue for the township, so that is a, a factor that, that, that changes, potentially changes, you know, how that blend is going to be used. Because frankly, where everyone lived in the township was an R1 or larger at, at one point in time, you know, but it has progressed, if you want to call it that, came to the township, it'll, you know, it, it mitigated the need for that in those, in that designation. And then there was a, the last question I had was on, what natural feature, natural feature protection, did you want to address that?
Right. Well, there's, some of the drains that run on the property, clearly there's going to be flood plains associated with those, and you're not going to be able to encroach. And I know the, you know, we try to preserve as many trees on the property as we can and work around that area.
It's, it's a guy...
But some things is uncontrollable. I mean, once you start putting in the sewers and such, you have to remove some.
Right. It's a guideline, there is no, it has to have a certain percentage. So, I mean, it's something that, that, that we're encouraged, we encourage, and we consider when we consider site plans, but it's not like a person has to have X, X number. There is no hard and fast requirement.
Other than PUD Chairman, I mean, if they come in with the PUD, then they have the ten percent open space preservation.
Right, right, right. But right now, we're just talking about...
Correct.
Rezoning, right. Okay. With that, did you have any other comments?
I did not. I think it was all covered. Master plan recommends low density, so, I mean, understandably, that this was, we were expecting a rezoning once the sewers went through, so...
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions for the planner?
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Julie, do you know what the, I forget, do you know what the Preston pines overall density is compared, because they're piggybacking on this for their R1C. Do you know what that is?
I believe it was less than, than two units per acre, actually. We, yeah.
Okay, I agree with Mr. Flynn, R1C is a non-starter, and you met with the township a few minutes today? You haven't, have you met with them previously to talk about this?
We met with the previous planner when we first bought the property.
How long ago was that?
It's over a year ago, sir. Yeah. So, as far as the density goes, any, any layouts that we've done, any concept that we've done, we haven't come even close to two units to the acre. But I understand, we have to prove that to you, that remains to be seen. Again, we were piggybacking off of the R1C, the eighty-footers that were being proposed to the west of us, and I understand that it's only a recommendation, it hasn't been ratified yet. So we're, we're in the beginning stages of a very long process, hopefully not too long, though. We look forward to working with you, working with Julie, if, if you'll allow that to happen. I'd like to ask to be tabled tonight to provide some more information, if at all possible. At least have the opportunity to come back, and then maybe at a later meeting, we continue the discussions you have, at your discretion, if you'd like to.
Well, I mean, you're, you're, what you're proposing is rezoning to, to R1C.
That's right.
And so if we table that, I mean, again, I don't know that I'm going, that, that you're going to be able to tell me something compelling that's going to, that's going to cause me to recommend approval. And I've heard from two of my colleagues who I think echo the same thing.
Yeah, I, I would say you're, you got two options, we can, you can withdraw your request, or we're going to take action to deny it.
Yeah.
So, because tabling it gets us nowhere, because outside, I, I get that there's some R1C as part of Lombardo project, but that's in the context of a PUD...
PUD, a bigger project.
And a whole other thing, and you haven't presented that.
Understood.
So, a blanket R1C, I don't think you're going to get anywhere with this body, so your choices are, are binary, either a denial or withdraw your request.
Is, question, sir?
Sure.
Is it possible to amend our, our request from R1C to R1B? Under this application?
Well, that's the attorney.
I think that would be a question for the attorney.
I believe, depending on, because you've talked about doing a couple of different things, and those are probably, for instance, if you're going to submit a PUD, if you're going, if you're going to offer conditions, those would be something you would do differently. It would be a different application. Am I correct, Julie?
Yeah.
It would be a separate application?
Correct.
Separate form?
A PUD is a different process.
The PUD is a different application, but I still have to apply for underlying zoning?
Correct.
So whether I'm asking for R1C or R1B at some point in the future, I understand R1C is not going to go. I get it.
Yeah.
I'm not asking for that in the future. I understand that's the application.
So if you table, I mean, but if you table this, all we're dealing with is R1C. So you can go back with different information that we address it, but if you want to...
I thought I heard I could amend the application to R1B.
But, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I, I think, I think what, what our chair is saying is that if you table this, we're still looking at the same application, just at a different date. So if you're going to amend the application, without looking it up, I don't know if you could use the same application. I'm not sure if, if our planner knows.
Yeah, I think that would, I, I'm not sure at this time either if we can amend the application, because we would definitely have to re-notify it, and it would change the, the whole process and, and the request.
Frankly, I'm, and I'm, I'm not comfortable doing it, you know?
Amending the application to R1B?
Not, not in the current process. I mean, if you want to come with a different, you know, with, with, with a, with a different request, I think that, that mitigate, that, that, that causes a new process.
It would be much cleaner to do it as an, as a new request.
I think it's more transparent, and this is a, this is a public process.
Right.
Okay, so we notice people based on a certain request.
Right.
And not to say we're going to table it, and then we won't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily have to have another public hearing. Now, we will notice people. I, I just, I guess, I'm not comfortable. I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, the cleanest way at this point, I would say, withdraw your request, go back to your people and decide whether or not you want to come back with a PUD, or you want to come back with a new request for R1B, which I would, I would consider R1B. I think that's more reasonable. If you want to just do a blanket rezoning request without showing us a plan in advance, that would, that would probably have a little bit, at least in my mind, better chance of getting you past the finish line. Otherwise, you're going to have to do some engineering work and come up with the, with a, with an actual plan, if you want to talk PUD.
Just for the PUD, you're saying? If, we have to provide more engineering for the PUD?
Well, yeah, you'd have to...
Give, give us a plan.
It would be a conditional...
Well, I understand we have to provide a, a site plan.
Right.
Yeah.
But as far as, you, you mentioned the word engineering, so...
Well, sorry.
Some preliminary engineering.
Yeah.
Of course, of course.
Some pretty pictures.
Um...
So, but that, that's, I mean, it's up to you. Or we can give you a denial tonight.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to get off on the wrong foot with this, with, with, with the commission. I want to work with you. I hope you want to work with us. We do quality developments in Shelby Township. We have other interests here. We want to work with you. I understand R1C, I understand your concerns. I, I guess we had the benefit of looking at our site plans and not, you don't have the opportunity to look at that.
So we're back to get two options. You can either withdraw it, or we're going to take an action.
As long as you don't hold it against me if you want to take action and you want to deny it.
No.
But we'd, we'd like to come back before you at some point in the future and at least propose the R1B.
You own the property, or control the property, you have every right to do it.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just so we're absolutely clear. I do want to come back with a PUD, a proposed PUD, but do I have to apply for R1B as well? So two applications, R1B and a PUD site plan, a concept plan?
Yes.
And we can do that?
That's the same thing Lombardo did. And if you're looking at the good graces of this body and the Township Board, of which I am the representative, I would withdraw it, because if we vote down tonight, then it's got to come before the board, and that's a pain in the butt for me.
Okay. I don't, I, I understand. Then we will respectfully withdraw our request this evening, and we look forward to a, a future submittal, potentially R1B, or R1B with a PUD with a site plan as well.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
You're good.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll see you in the future.
All right.
Very soon. Thank you.
Very good.
One other question. Just to the residents, if, if anybody wants to sign in, or if you get your addresses, names and addresses, once we do evolve the site plan, concept plan?
Tell you what...
I'd like to meet with you.
Just the board.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we have the opportunity to get with everybody that showed up tonight, so we can show the, the plan to them and, and try to get a good working relationship.
Great. Tell you what, and if you want to get the addresses from the individuals that received a public notice that live within the radius?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure our, our, our crack planning staff would be happy to accommodate.
That would be fantastic.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that for you.
With your permission, that'd be great.
You sign in?
Yes, sir.
Good, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next item, site plan number one-seven-dash-five-five, special end use fourteen. Mike Zaire, Zaire Marathon.
My name is Bob Lynn. I'm with Urban Land Consultants. I've been working on this project for quite a, quite a length, lengthy time. We've ran into some roadblocks. We can't get a sewer permit for this project. I've been in contact with the old engineer, Fozel Khan, and the new engineer, and the DEQ tells me I have to have a sewer designed for the existing sewer on Dequinder, which is a pressure sewer. The pressure sewer was put in in two thousand and four, was designed by Wade Trim, but the DEQ says I have to analyze the whole system, which I don't think that's fair, but I, I guess I don't know what to do. When I met with Dave Miller and Gordy Wilson about a month ago, they told me that Carol Thurber was supposed to have this sewer figured out for the rest of the township before she left. So I don't know where I go from here, but basically what I was told at the meeting with Gordy and Dave Miller, that I have to have somebody analyze the whole pressure sewer system. But the problem is there's only one user on that system, and it's the BMW dealer across the street. So that's my dilemma. Otherwise, we would have been under construction by now, so...
All right, so, that's, that's all wonderful. Unfortunately, we're not the DEQ.
I know, you're not.
But, but we can give you, so you, your, your site plan approval is good for two years, right? Madam?
Correct, yeah. It was approved in two thousand and seventeen, and it expired, so...
Okay, so you're looking for an extension for another...
I need to, I did, I need to get a permit, or the DEQ has got to say I don't need a permit, but that's been my issue for many months.
I think your, I think the, your request that, that came before this board two years ago still seems valid, and if you need more time to work it out?
Yeah.
That seems fine by me. Does anyone have any questions, comments? I see none. Is there a motion? Can someone make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
I move to approve an extension for site plan number seventeen-dash-fifty-five, SLU fourteen. Mike Zaire, Zaire Marathon, four-five-four-four-zero, Dequinder, southeast corner of West Utica and Dequinder. Existing gas station, non-conforming Class A use, remodeling to add a drive-through facility.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by... Any questions on the motion? Hearing none? I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
The final item is site plan number one-three-dash-zero-nine, Briarwood Point Site Condominiums. Mr. Lent, is that you too, or is there somebody else from your firm coming?
I, I can go ahead and explain it, Chairman.
All right, please.
So this is Briarwood Condominiums. They've had a couple modi, this is an, you know, a site plan was approved in eighty-seven. They've gone through a couple modifications back in nineteen ninety and ninety-seven. The original development included a hundred-and-seventy-six attached multiple-family units, and then in two thousand and ten, it was revised from multiple-family units to a hundred detached single-family to the north. They have reconfigured a couple of the condominium units in there. They've lost a unit and actually eliminated a driveway that connected these two developments. We've reviewed the site plans, there's no issues with, with the, the plans. They have to make some minor adjustments and modifications, but for the most part, they've revised the master deed and, and everything's good.[1653.62] master deed and everything's good, I don't have a problem with the modification they're currently proposing.
So, the product elevations, that's all consistent with what's being done there?
That's all consistent.
So, it's really, they moved, they moved something, they got rid of a connecting road and kind of moved, moved a couple of units? They got rid of one unit, right?
Uh, one unit, correct.
Any questions for the unsuspecting civil engineer? Hearing none, is there a, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Moore.
I move to approve the modification for site plan 13-09, Briarwood Point Site Condominiums, east side of Dequinder Road, north of 25 Mile Road, based on the applicament submitting revised site plans addressing department and engineering comments.
Support. Moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Flynn?
Yes.
Commissioner Pohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. If you want to yell at Pete, tell him that we're screaming up and down, where was he with his, you know?
Thank you, we have the engineering plans, now we can submit them, is that, is that correct? Now, we can...
Yes, as long as those plans are corrected, you're good to go.
Okay, thank you for your help, okay.
Good night.
Planner and Director's report?
I don't have anything, Chairman.
There's nobody in the audience. Mr. Dalu?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
For adjourned.
Among Shelby Township's greatest assets are the world-class recreational opportunities it provides to residents. Within its borders, the township offers more than 1,100 acres in township parks, sports fields, playgrounds, and trails. Shelby Township provides an escape for nature lovers with many of its parks, home to more than 100 species of native birds and animals, including nesting American bald eagles, and more than 80 species of trees, shrubs, wildflowers. It's hard not to fall for the township's beauty. Along with its parks and recreation facilities and programs, Shelby Township is home to Cherry Creek Golf Club, one of the finest public golf and banquet destinations in Michigan. The township also shares the 4,000-acre Stony Creek Metro Park, which is home to the beautiful and tranquil 500-acre Stony Creek Lake. Shelby Township also hosts part of the Macomb Orchard Trail, a 24-mile hike and bike path that connects 180 miles of trails across southeastern Michigan. Shelby Township's parks and access to the Clinton River are the heart of what makes the township a better place to play. Add the township's hundreds of miles of hiking and biking trails, and it's easy to recognize Shelby Township's access and opportunity for recreation are like no other places in the region. Among these trails is the westernmost portion of the Macomb Orchard Trail, which spans from the township's western border and ends in downtown Richmond. There are also trails that connect the township's 800-acre Riverbends Park to Lake St. Clair. Shelby Township is also home to a key connection of the Macomb County 70-mile trail loop and the planned Ironvale Bike Trail, which will ultimately connect the city of Detroit to the state of Wisconsin. Shelby Township's trails offer residents and visitors a scenic mix of up-north hikes and great asphalt bike paths. All of these amenities ensure that no matter what your outdoor interests might be, there is a place in Shelby Township for you and your family. A better place.